Okay, hey Jim, I will let you start the meeting at your, whatever you'd like. We have a quorum at this point.
Okay, just looking for, I thought I had the agenda here.
I got it. I've got a presentation going here.
Okay, perfect, okay. Oh, you're all set?
I'm all set to go.
Okay, we'll call the, I'll call the meeting to order at, is it right now, six, six thirty-one, Stand for Budge of Allegiance. Budge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so, we have, we have a roll call, I'm seeing everyone that's on the, on the screen. Can you help me out with that?
Sure, yeah. Okay, we've got, let's see, from Prospect.
Go Brown line.
Hi Gil, from Seymour, Jim.
Yeah, it's me.
From Derby, we've got Nicole. Nicole, are you there?
I am here.
Thank you Nicole. Let's see, we've got Keith from Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments. Keith Rosenfeld, Aaron Budris from NVCog. Aaron, you want to wave? Thank you.
Okay.
Lori Rotella from the borough of Nagatuck. Lori?
Hi.
Hi Lori, thank you for joining us. We've got Ginny Harger from town of Shelton.
Hello.
Hi Ginny. And, let's see, Dave White from Bristol.
Right here.
Hey Dave, thanks for joining us this evening. Did I miss anybody?
My pleasure.
Yes.
Oh, Bob Clark. Yeah, Bob, Bob Clark from Woodbury. Hi Bob, glad you could make it. I'm going to add your name to the chat. And we do have a quorum. A quorum today is six persons, six RPC representatives, and we are good to go.
Okay, great.
I have not, as far as the Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments, we did not receive any public comment before the meeting.
Okay, so we have no public comment, no, no written comment? Alright, so we'll move to item two, the administrative items, the adoption of the October sixth, twenty twenty meeting minutes.
I moved the minutes I presented.
Alright, we have a, was that, that was Bob?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Bob, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Our second by Dave, alright. Any comment or any changes before we vote the motion to accept the minutes? I've gone through them, I haven't found anything, I'm in agreement. So, all in favor of adopting the minutes?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extension?
I, I wasn't here last meeting, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, we got one abstention.
Lori Rotella.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so move. The schedule, the adoption of the Regional Planning Commission meeting schedule for twenty twenty-one, we'll need a motion to approve that schedule if it's a...
If I may, if I may just interject, I added two options because we've been talking about restructuring the NVCog. There are two options, option A is for six meetings, and option B is for four meetings quarterly.
Okay, does anybody have any input on that? I feel the four meetings right now, the way we've been structured.
I see four meetings.
Until we get back to normal? Yeah, you can always, yeah. Who the hell knows how long that's gonna take right now? Yeah.
I have a feeling it's gonna be a new normal.
New normal. That'll put us in February. I, I, I kind of prefer the option B. And then we could get our updates and then bring them to our meetings. So, does anyone care to make a motion for B, unless anyone else has any comment?
Gil, I'm gonna be a stick in the mud, I prefer the six. As long as it's virtual.
Okay, any other, any other comment? We have a motion by Gil for the four. Do we have a second on the motion?
I have a question, Joanne, will we be staying virtual, do you think, even after?
Yeah, even though on this, on the proposals that I gave, the default is NVCog conference room. We, we see it virtual for the foreseeable future.
Okay, good.
As part of discussion, if we miss one meeting, and I don't mean myself, anybody here, if we miss one meeting, that's like twenty-five percent of, you know. So, I, I'm inclined to say six, and then if you can't make one, at least you've made, let's say, the other five or even four at that point. So, I, I'm indifferent to either one.
Okay, that's a, that's a good point. Gil, Bob's, Bob's expressed six.
I would go along with that's a good, that's a good point. I, I, I think that is a good point, you know. I go with the six also.
Okay.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, the motion's been withdrawn.
Thank you.
Can we have a?
I move for six meetings under Plan A.
Alright, we have a motion by Bob, option A, six meetings with February second, April sixth, June one, August third, October fifth, and December sixth.
Okay, and I checked, and those are all outside the holidays, so we're not interfering with any holidays or anything like that. I'm sorry Ginny, I cut you off.
That's okay.
Alright, we have a second?
I did.
Okay, oh Ginny, was it Ginny for the second?
Yes.
Ginny for the second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion's passed. Referrals?
That's gonna be Keith Rosenfeld.
Alright, Keith, where's our man? There he is.
Right here, right here Jim. This has to do with referrals that have come into the NVCog. Oh, since our last meeting on October sixth, we've had ten overall referrals from communities, two of which are NVCog communities. The other eight are ones that border the NVCog. Just to go over a slight, what each one was, a little description. Bristol had a referral on October seventh for adding an additional five hundred square feet of outdoor dining areas allowed by the CEO, excuse me, and in some cases, removing the special permit requirement. And just asking for a site plan on these commercial additions. Watertown, on October sixteenth, we received a referral for drive, drive-ups, drive-through facilities allowing for them to be expanded. As I, on October twenty-eighth, we received one, which is probably the one that was most controversial, from Woodbridge to allow for multifamily. And permit multifamily in each residential zone, assuring that a portion is for subsidized housing and for affordable housing. If you've read today, or read today's New Haven Independent Newspaper, you'll see that their public hearing started yesterday, and it's quite contentious. We've also received this month, or in October, a referral from Wallingford for an expansion of the industrial, of their industrial zone. Two from Ron Row, one in regards to outdoor sales and play equipment parking. The other one is also, is actually more information, and it's the formation of a proposed Stevenson Dam Business District. In order to, this is, in order to arrange for more commercial opportunities in the lumberyard area near the dam. Our, our, one we received from Washington, were actually changes in uses and residential zones for both construction, as well as visitors. They're considering people who have visitors who bring in mobile homes into, on their properties for the summer, and they're asking them to get a permit for that, a zoning permit. In Meriden, and I was talking to Joanna about this, this afternoon, we received a referral from the city declaring that places of worship were a matter of right. And changing some of those zoning, zoning requirements that would be, that were treated differently than non-religious ones that were set before them. This was a reaction, or this was a solution, due to the fact that the Department of Justice had come in earlier in the year in two thousand nineteen and twenty. And brought a case against them for discrimination, not only requiring them to change their zoning regulations, but also for their planning staff to undergo training in federal religious land use protection. So, it's, that's an interesting problem, or an interesting situation that's gonna be looked at. That actually was withdrawn, the regulations are going to be, as I see it, zeroed in more on to the industrial and commercial areas where their regulations geared, were geared for all of the zones. Most recently, we, also we received one from Newtown for a South Main Village District. And this was really only for one property because they were looking to expand that district to allow for an office to go to an outdoor restaurant area. Probably one of the more other interesting ones is, we've just received a referral from Roxbury, and you might want to look at it, it might pass through your desk. For accessory apartments, ease to use, easier to use language, simplifying their regulations, and allowing for two accessory apartments per single lot. One being inside the primary house, and the other one could be used as an actually standalone building. Each of these, even with the Woodbridge application, each of these presented no regional impacts or no intermittent impacts as well. And if you, if, if any of you have any questions on each, or each of these, or, or any of these zone changes. I'm here to answer any of your questions today.
Thanks, Keith. Sure, anybody, anybody have any questions for Keith on any of these? They're very interesting, you know, a lot of activity, a lot of, a lot of interesting topics. Towns are dealing with now, it's a, it's really a broad spectrum of different, different things. The Wood, the Woodbridge case is very, 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 very interesting, as most of our towns, in the, in the, at least in the Nagatuck Valley, we've already seen our affordable housing projects and subsidized housing projects. Some of the other towns, not so much, so they certainly can understand that that's gonna be, be a very hot topic. Woodbridge. So, having no questions on any of the referrals, we have any correspondence?
Yeah, there, I didn't receive any correspondence in the last couple of months for the RPC.
Okay, very good. Alright, item three, the update regarding the Cog, the VCog natural hazard mitigation plan.
And I'm going to stop sharing mine, and I'm gonna turn it over to Dave Murphy, he's gonna share his screen.
Alright.
Thank you Joanna. Okay. We're up and running, I only have one slide for this part of the agenda, item number three, hopefully it's visible. So, as some of you know, we have been working with NVCog on the update to the Hazard Mitigation Plan for the region. This will be the first plan for the region that includes all the towns currently configured, all nineteen, in one plan. Previously, all the different communities have been parts of either single jurisdiction plans, or, for example, with the former VCog towns, the four of them were part of one plan together. So, why am I here tonight? We have been engaged with a different, a couple of different kinds of public engagement for the project. Public involvement is required by FEMA, they don't say what we need to do, so we do the best we can, and this year has been challenging. So, we have a couple of different virtual tools that we've been using, a story map, which is an ESRI, RJS-type product. We have an internet, internet-based survey on Survey Monkey, and then we've had two workshops, which were pretty well attended. We had two workshops for town staff that were well attended, and we had one workshop for the public that was not well attended. So, we're looking ahead to how to involve the public further, and we have in our, in our budget nineteen public meetings. We know from working with WestCog a couple of months ago, that the public is not, they're not joining online virtual meetings. We did not know this six months ago, we thought, you know, heck, they'll be at the beach on vacation, it doesn't matter, they can click, enter the room on their iPhone and just be in a meeting, everybody's gonna participate. It's been the opposite, and I'm sure many of you have, have found that as well. So, we have a potential solution here, which we thought of working with, with, with Aaron and Joanna, which is possibly using existing planning commission or planning and zoning commission meetings to do a little presentation about the planning process, and to the extent that, that these meetings are already public meetings, that would kind of help us fulfill some potential for public engagement. In addition, of course, all of you are members of the public, you typically live in the towns that, that you're representing tonight. So, that's our current proposal, is, is to sort of just join these existing ongoing meetings, targeting the next three months if possible. It may be a little bit late to get on December agendas, but certainly January, February wouldn't be too late. Again, five-minute presentation, take comments from the public, and, you know, hopefully get some good input on the planning process for people that haven't taken the survey or use other means possible. So, with that, just wanted to take thirty seconds or a minute and get opinions on this, and see if, if folks would be receptive to this approach.
David, if you haven't already sent that out, would you send it out to us?
Sure, this, this approach right here, I can send that, or do you mean the typical presentation that we would give?
Well, this and the presentation.
We can do that.
Thank you.
I think, I think it's a good, a good way to, good way to go, at least you'll be able to, you'll be noticed on all, all the different agendas for all the different P and Z's. So, a little bit more exposure of anybody that may, may want to join in. It's been, it has been very challenging, even to get forum in this format.
Yeah, I don't know that we're gonna get a huge public input even at a P and Z meeting, but I do know the P and Z members would probably be interested.
Great, well, I think that, that's a good idea then, and I think involving the P and Z members is something that we had done in the past. In fact, two cycles ago on these plans, we did work with some of the commissions, and then the updates that we did six years ago, we kind of got away from that. So, getting back to it is, is not a bad idea.
Okay. Alright, well, thanks David.
And I can start right up in number four, unless Joanna, you had anything you wanted to say?
I would just say about the Hazard Mitigation Plan update, we do have a, a project webpage on the NVCog website. It's a NVCogct.gov/hmp. If you'd like to, you know, look at more information, or check out that story map that, that Melon McRoom put together. And the survey's also posted on there, so take a look if you, if you're interested.
Thanks Aaron. Alright, well, I can go to the next item and try to get you guys home early, or at least do my part to get you home early tonight. I don't know what comes after me, but so, I'm gonna go through a project that's going on, and you may be wondering for a few minutes, how you can be involved or why you should be. But I hopefully will convince you how. So, this is a presentation about the Resilient Connecticut Project. This is a project that is funded by HUD, and you may have heard, over the last couple of years, a lot of funding went to Bridgeport after Hurricane Sandy to work on resilience in the city's south end. Some of the funding went to the state's resilience agency, known as CIRCA, and that is to conduct planning along coastal Connecticut, but also inland Connecticut in the counties that have shoreline. So, the right-hand side of this graphic is what we're focusing on. So, the project, as sort of envisioned by CIRCA, our state's agency involved with the resilience, is to look at how to adapt structures and critical infrastructure and facilities in flood zones to withstand more frequent flooding. So, this is not just a coastal project, this is also getting at riverine flood risks and other types of natural hazard risks. And where we can't adapt structures or critical infrastructure, what can we do to kind of get people and our infrastructure out of harm's way? But some of the other important facets of the project are energy, economic, and social resilience, transit, transportation. So, you'll see this phrase resilient corridors, if you stay plugged into this project, and resilient transit-oriented development, or TOD. So, the, as CIRCA has envisioned this project, it's really focused on how to, how to develop the TOD areas that are most resilient already, and how to make other potential TOD areas kind of more resilient. So, that if in the long term, we need to get away from the shoreline, or the edge of water, or areas of riverine flood risk, we'll have a place to go and to focus our resources. So, because federal funds are dispersed on the county level, and we don't really use counties in Connecticut, the funds can be used in New Haven and Carroll counties, but we're working with the four Cogs that make up those two counties. So, WestCog, MetroCog, NVCog, and Sprott. And you may be looking at this map and thinking, oh geez, you know, we're, we don't have as many towns in the project as, as other Cogs. And we're gonna be focusing especially along areas of TOD potential, so that even reduces the number of communities down to six that we're gonna spend the most time on in the NVCog region, Waterbury down to Derby. But if you're not in one of those towns, if you're in Southbury, for example, or Middlebury, you still are part of this because things that happen along Route Eight and the Metro North Line could possibly affect you, especially for putting resources into TOD development. So, that's kind of our, our focus area. These are the general tasks, which I'll go through in a minute. And I have some, some additional detail on each of these bullets, so I'm gonna just move on to the next slide, tell you what we're doing right now. In December, we're taking CIRCA's climate vulnerability assessment, otherwise known as CVA, which they conducted for the shoreline towns, and we're marching it inland. So, they divided the shoreline towns into a grid, and they looked at coastal risk indices like erosion and saltwater intrusion, and we are recasting that into climate indices such as flooding, wind, and heat. And then we're again, taking it from the shoreline towns, going north as far as Waterbury, the NVCog region. We also are looking at zones of shared risk, this is a concept that CIRCA has been kind of working with, and what it means is, it sounds like a complicated way of just saying, people who share a risk, that's really what it is. We are taking some of CIRCA's mapping, this is New Haven, choosing something from outside the region just for sake of ease, and we're kind of recasting those zones of shared risk to things that are a little bit more functional. So, the view on the left kind of just outlines flood zones, CIRCA gave that to us, we said, well, you know what, Fairhaven is kind of more of a zone of shared risk because they can be cut off during the flood. How are we doing it? We're looking at the hazard mitigation plans, which is underway, of course, the regional plans of conservation development, which are your own P O C Ds, and then various transit-oriented development studies as they exist, such as Freight Street in Waterbury. And so, your homework, I guess, if I can leave you with any homework, is to look at regional infrastructure transit type opportunities and challenges. So, we're talking about Route Eight, I eighty-four, Metro North, water systems, sewer systems, ever source, et cetera, because we need all this infrastructure to make communities more resilient, especially areas that we develop going forward. Think about also, those direct transit-oriented development opportunities, are they in flood zones, riverine flood zone specifically, do we need to do anything to make them more resilient? Think about projects that you've had trouble kind of addressing on your own, in your own community, and, and think about successes where towns work together, because CIRCA is really interested in, in sort of leveraging how communities can work together. I just pulled this off the NVCog website, I don't know much about it, but it's an example of how some of the towns in the region have been working together recently. And then the last bit of homework really is to think about future projects, because our job in this project is, overall, is going to be choosing areas, and we will be choosing five from the NVCog region to kind of further develop into resilience projects. This example is from outside the region, this is Meriden Green. Many of you have probably, probably seen this or heard about this, it's a park that's really very close to the railroad station, so there's transit-oriented development potential. And the park now exists where buildings used to be, and the park offers some flood mitigation by virtue of allowing some flood waters to collect. The picture in the lower right-hand corner is a recent kind of not-too-bad flood, but you can see how the park floods instead of buildings, and it's near TOD in Meriden. So, that's the kind of project that we're gonna be looking for in the NVCog region. My next slide is the kind of example of where that could happen. So, if you're from Waterbury or have driven through, maybe you've thought about the Freight Street, potential for redevelopment, these are kind of some images from some of the planning that's been done. This is an area next to the river, and so, is there potential to make this kind of a resilience pilot project? Yes. Does it matter that we're kind of recasting some of the areas that we've already been thinking about? I would say yes, because if we can get the state to be involved in some of the, some of the heavy lifting, and his concept design, or even more advanced design for some of these projects, that'll lessen the burden for all of us. So, again, be thinking about what kinds of projects in your towns might be a good fit for Resilient Connecticut. And then, if you want to reach out to us, we'll be, we'll be back presenting to you again, it sounds like with the more frequent meeting schedule, we might be back in February. If you need to reach out to me, by all means, my contact information is on the right-hand side, and then if you want to reach somebody at CIRCA, you can reach out to John Tris, who is the Director of Resilience Planning at CIRCA. And that is all that I have about Resilient Connecticut. So, if there's any questions about this project, I'd be happy to take them, if not, we will see you again in a couple of months.
Okay, thank you. I have one question on the, on a couple of the maps you showed, if they, you know what the actual increase of the flood plain elevation, what it actually is now? Wasn't there a change in that within the last few years along the coast, our coastline, Connecticut coastline?
Oh, right, so the sea level rise projections that were captured by Politec eighteen eighty-two, and then enumerated in the state's statute, correct? So, it's the twenty inches by twenty fifty, I believe, is what they want us to use for planning if you're a coastal town.
Twenty inches?
I believe so, yes, twenty inches by, we just rounded up to two feet to make it easier by twenty.
Okay, okay, so that's what the design criteria is, okay, great. Alright. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move to item five, the roundtable discussion of local activities and municipal land uses. Who would like, who'd like to start? Let's see.
I've got a number of them, that, that's been happening in Shelton, if anybody's interested.
Alright, absolutely.
Well, we have had a big focus on our downtown, and for the last several years, and right now, we have one apartment building for sixty-nine apartments that was built, and it took over a retail space, and incorporated some of the building that was there, and then they built up and out. So, it's quite an improvement to that stretch of Howe Avenue. Then, the same developer has property that abuts this particular property on the back street, and that was approved for thirty apartments. Right now downtown, we have two new buildings going up, one is on the site of the former Webster Bank Ranch on the corner of Howe and White, and that's gonna be fifty-six apartments. And then there's another one that is about a five-story building, it has seventy-two apartments, this one has an interior two-level parking for ninety-five vehicles. These all, except for the unit that's in the rear of the property that I first mentioned about, they all have retail on the first floor. We have had in the last three years approved three other projects, but there has been no movement on them at all. The developers are just sitting there. There's been no shovel on the ground. And the only thing that's really happened is that an old building was, a little house was taken down and the, and the lot cleared for that. We do have a proposal for along the Riverwalk for a building that would be mixed use on the bottom and eighty apartments above with parking for one hundred eighty-one vehicles on the site. And right across the street, it was a very new concept. It's a mixed recreational building. It would contain a pool and have space for tenants to have martial arts and yoga and things like that. In other parts of town, we have had a lot of activity. There is one project that's being built now off of Bridgeport Avenue. That's thirty age restricted duplexes. It's the first one in the city. We do have another eighteen lot subdivision that was approved on over fifteen acres with giving Shelton over four acres of open space. There's been several subdivisions, two lot, three lot, four lot. We did have a Sears Hardware in town that was on Bridgeport Avenue and that building was taken down and a CVS replaced it. It has a smaller footprint altogether and more parking spaces. Not that Sears Hardware ran out of parking spaces, but just the way that they configured the parking lot. We do have this, a florist and a greenhouse that has been in Shelton for years, close to the Trumbull border. And that family was interested in reducing their footprint. So we have approved a convenience store, gas station and two retail small buildings to replace that. The florist would be taking over one of the retail spaces. The greenhouse really hasn't been used for years as you would think it would be. We have different things like Aquarian coming to us wanting to renovate their lagoons that they have on property by the reservoirs that we have. There's an expansion of a warehouse for a business that's relocating from another town in the area and needed more space and couldn't find it where they were. And then we have another new retail building proposed of over ten thousand square feet. That's adjacent to Bridgeport Avenue. There's been, there was a project that we approved a couple of years ago for a hundred five apartments in a marina right on the river. But that was held up for a while because the developer was sued by the resident, one of the residents across the street in an apartment complex. But I was just informed a couple of weeks ago that that particular lawsuit is being withdrawn. So we should find some, get some movement on that hopefully in the spring. The one disappointment that we've had is that there was a shopping center that we approved and it started to be built and all of a sudden it just stopped dead in its tracks. And so we have these cinder block structures up and nothing at all. We've been told that the issue is that one of the, the partners pulled out and they've had to go for refinancing and they're having difficulty getting that. And we did deny two big apartment complexes. One was for two hundred six apartments. It would have meant that existing, it was, they wanted a zone change to go from an industrial zone to a PDD. And that was for two hundred six apartments and it would meant that a parking lot that exists now would have a new building put up on it. And this, because it was on a hill, the slope of that hill would be changed drastically. And we just didn't feel that it was appropriate to change the zone from industrial. Also, pretty much a stone's throw away across the street, we denied another proposal for three hundred, three hundred forty apartments. There are two parking lots, one in the back of a building. That was, it's pretty much unused and one along Bridgeport Avenue because of the tenants being different than what it was years ago. Though that part, front parking space, the lot is pretty much unused. And that's where they proposed between the front and the back parking lots, four or five buildings. And with a, with some amenities, but we didn't really feel that that was appropriate at all in the, and very concerned about how that would impact that section of Bridgeport Avenue. So we've had twenty-two remote meetings since April twenty-third. Our last in-person meeting was March twentieth. And also at the beginning of May, we modified our outdoor dining regs and that was very much appreciated by our business community and helped quite a bit. That's it.
All right, thanks. Busy. I'm just looking at my screen. Dave, do you want to?
Yeah. Yep. Okay. I've, I've got really, I've got really just one thing. You did already mention the amendment to our zoning regulations permitting outdoor dining for our BG zone, general business zone. And I don't think that there's going to be any conflict in having this regulation change put in. The, we were recently, the city was recently, has recently authorized funding for the city to do a zoning regulations rewrite. We're, we're about ready to send out the RFP. And we'll hopefully update our regulations so that they're a little bit more concise, maybe easier to understand, to read, to work with. So we're, we're very interested in the results of this. That's really all I have.
All right, thanks, Dave. Bob?
Yeah.
Bob from Woodbury?
There's not much going on in, in town outside of the slow, because of the slow time of year. The zoning commission is still hammering and yammering away at zoning regulation changes. Because we're meeting virtually, the chair doesn't feel that we're getting as much done. So it's a plod rather than a steady progression. That's it from the hills.
Thanks, Bob. All right, Stacy?
Um, the past two weeks have started the usual slowdown at this time of year. Up until then, we were, we did have there's a lot of stuff going on. We too were continuing on with slow and steady text amendments. Like everybody else, I think I shared last month, we updated our outdoor dining regulations as well, which was appreciated. But we are now working on regulations pertaining to commercial vehicles and residential zones. We're also looking at large-scale solar regulations pertaining to that. And there's a couple of other things also as time permits that we're looking at. We do have the potential of a large-scale subdivision on a somewhat challenging lot in our town. It's a fifty-six acre parcel with steep slopes and access issues. Not sure if that's going to go forward or not. Every few years, the property owner starts asking questions again. But there are, you know, they've been contacting us about some different things. So there is a possibility it may go forward. The only other thing is that one of the things that came out of meeting with the gentleman from Malone and McBroom was looking at our floodplain regulations and thinking that we might need to update them to make sure they're meet current requirements, which may need changing in ordinance. And then also looking into the affordable housing plan that all the towns are required to have before July twenty, two thousand twenty-two. We haven't started that yet. I did put a question out to Joanna today asking if anybody else in the region has done this or has any pointers for getting started? Or if we're aware of any other grants that are out there or what have you? So if anybody's got any information on that, I'm all ears.
And I just want to let you know, Stacy, I didn't find any grants. I'm going to keep looking. I'm going to keep looking tomorrow. But I know, and I want to throw it over to Bob. I know that Woodbury has issued an RFP for an affordable housing plan. Do you know anything about that, Bob?
No, I have not heard a thing about that.
Okay, I, I know Mary Ellen Edwards posted it on the CT planners listserv.
I must have missed that. Okay.
Yeah, so you might want to contact or I can get you guys together talking about that if you want to talk about that. But I'm going to keep on asking, but as far as I know, I, you know, I scoured the listserv and I was starting to look on the OPM website. I didn't see anything.
Okay.
Now, there, there is a three and a half acre development going in that is not, well, it's not, yeah, I think they probably are moving in now. I saw, I saw a moving truck in there the other day. But that is not specific for any age group, for example. There is talk in the new regulations of a new district, but that has not been finalized. So I should probably have talked to Mary Ellen this afternoon before I got on, got into this group because I'm not aware of anything coming out of zoning specifically.
I, I didn't, didn't mean to put you that wasn't my, that wasn't my intention. But I just, I've noticed there's a lot of towns across Connecticut that have issued RFPs for these affordable housing plans. So you're not alone in the, in trying to anticipate this. And I, as far as I know, it's the first plans are due July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
That's what I saw. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'll call her in the morning and find out what, why I've been left out of the loop.
All right, let's see here. That was Stacy, right? That gave us that update. We'll go to Lori.
Um, we just recently approved a plan for a five-story assisted living facility on North Main Street down in Union City, part of Nagatuck. So hopefully that'll be moving forward. They're hoping to break ground in the spring. So, yeah, private pay facility and nice, it looks really nice. We somewhat modified our outdoor dining regs. Well, we just extended out what the governor allowed until January, I think it's second twenty twenty-two, so all of next year and then into next New Year's Eve in case it's a nice night, who knows? We've been working with our local restaurants. So we're doing a round two of Eat Local, Win Local, where we collected gift cards from other local restaurants. And on Mondays and Fridays now, we are doing live Facebook drawings with the mayor, NE DC and the Nagatuck Chamber of Commerce. So for anybody who sends in their receipts from a local restaurant, we pull names out. We pulled four on this past Monday. So we're going to do it again on Friday, trying to keep people going to the restaurants, even if it's for takeout, but trying a different restaurant that they've never been to before. So that's about it. We have a new application in for a fast food restaurant on Rubber Ave. And I think that's it right now.
Okay, thanks Lori. Gil?
Okay, from Prospect. We're planning and zoning up here. We've done a couple of site plans. We have one for Masonary Supply. And I think they're going to withdraw. They kind of filled in some wetlands, but they'll be adjusting that accordingly and they will reapply. Now, we had a, an auto dealer right in the center of town that we, we approved their site plan. So, and we're, again, like everybody else, have a little bit of time on our hands that we can do some text amendments and text adjustments. You know, we're working on the gas station, retail slash retail. It's not really gas stations anymore. They're, they're half store, half gas station. So like Trumbull and Farms, et cetera, et cetera. So we're trying to get a balance between that. Is it more gas station or is it more retail? So we're, we're going to figure that out. We had a couple of home occupations, lawn care people, things like that, computer-generated sales. And that's, that's about it for Prospect.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And Nicole?
Hello, everyone. Nicole from Derby. Planning and Zoning Commission at Derby is now considering a PDD. There's a lot of site, they're trying to be, instill flexibility in their planning process there. They're also definitely looking at TOD, the transit oriented development in different areas down on Factory Street. That's where the old Life Touch was, where the lumberyard was behind there, trying to get buildings in there. That's kind of what we are right now. Not much else going on.
All right, thanks Nicole. Did I, did I miss anybody? Other?
I, I have something, may I throw something in for Waterbury?
Sure.
Sure. I know that you're all from Waterbury, but they're, they're working on that just because Dave brought that up from the room. One thirty Freight Street, the large building down there. He mentioned Freight Street a couple of times in his presentation. They're going to be demolishing that large, very large factory building, taking that down. We have a lot of bids on that. So we're working on that. That'll really clean up Freight Street like he was talking about earlier in the, his presentation. So. And we have a new Hoffman BMW going up for Waterbury, right up near Lowman Chevrolet. So that's, that's exciting to watch that. So.
Which of those factory buildings are you talking about?
It's the old Chase brass. As you're going down Freight Street from the center of town, it's on the right-hand side.
That multiple building?
Yes. There's quite a few different variety of buildings. Some have wood roofs, some are all metal. It's quite a variety, you know? And that goes all the way through. He had the map up before and it was, well, I, I recognized it. And they, they're going, it goes all the way to West Main Street, goes all the way through. So it's a street to street.
What a shame.
Did they, does that involve any brownfields, Gil? Did they have to do any remediation work from those old?
They're still working on that. They're going to take it down to the slab and then they'll be able to get in there. I wouldn't walk in the building myself right at the moment. So, well, that's what I told them. Don't walk in that building. Yeah, it's very scary, you know? So they're going to take it down and then once they get the slab in place, well, down to the slab, then they're going to do some testing and do some remediation, hopefully. See if we can get somebody in there to take, I think it's a ten-acre site.
Wow.
It's a large piece of property and it's dead flat, which nobody has that anymore. So. All right, thank you for Waterbury. I just want to throw that in.
Thanks. Yeah, we, in Seymour, we've kind of experienced a little bit, which a lot of communities that we just talked about. We, we did pass a big affordable housing project. It's going to be kicked off, about ninety units. But I think that, and then a lot of, just a lot of different type of concepts and, and different type of uses that people are proposing, but a lot of it is still just kind of like in the wind. But really what struck me tonight, listening to this, this review from all the communities. And this is a very experienced panel we have here. A lot of us have been around for quite some time. But it struck me that realization is that right now with so many municipalities going out for the rewrites of their regulations and maybe taking this little slower pause that we've got, but how much the, our areas are changing? Especially, you know, when Jenny gave you updates at Shelton, that, you know, what we didn't hear and we don't hear anymore is That, you know, what we didn't hear and we don't hear anymore is the single-family subdivisions, the starter home subdivisions, the, the upper upscale subdivisions, you know? None of us, I think, are seeing those big tracks anymore. We're not seeing homeownership as being a primary, you know, what everybody strives for. So, you know, with everybody doing their rewrites of the regulations, it's, it's quite interesting to see what's going to, how, how we're going to shape up as a region. Because I, I don't see that development coming back anytime soon. So I, I, that's the takeaway I got from tonight's roundtable here, that we're really in that, one of those times that things are really changing once again. So with that, we can go. I didn't miss anybody, did I? I don't want to anybody out. I'm looking at the screen here. I think we got everybody. Okay, we can.
Can I just clarify? Our subdivisions total 18 new houses and that other 18-lot subdivision is, those are single-family homes. And those are going to be pretty pricey. One of the ones that I did not talk about is on Long Hill Crossroads and it's called Hawks Ridge. And that has been quite popular. It's, it started off, I think they said that they would have like a 10-year build out. And we're probably in about year five right now. I don't see them having to take 10 years to build this, but.
That's quite a hybrid. That's quite a hybrid what they're doing there too, right? That's not, that's not a street, that's a cluster or a PDD.
Yeah, that was a single family and then further down, there's some little side streets. And then further down after that, there's some high-end duplexes, townhouses. Yeah, there's a mixture in there. So there's still a lot of people, the, the one that is the 18-lot subdivision that's on 15 acres, plus acres. He, that is the same developer and he specifically has said that he is, people do not want one acre homes, property anymore. They don't, they don't want to take care of it anymore. That's why he proposed this and, and it went through.
Yep. And like I said, for many of us to have been around, we're, we're used to talking about, well, we've got another 100-lot subdivision. We've got another 40 lots of them. We have that. So times have really changed for us. Okay, so can we move on to the update of regarding the Regional Planning Commission restructuring?
Sure. I just wanted to, I, I remember Marcus Long was on earlier. Is he still on? Because I usually, he gives an update. I, did I miss him?
I don't think he's on.
Okay, because I know he was trying to do two meetings at once. So, okay, no problem. We can move on. So regarding the Regional Planning Commission restructuring, since our last meeting, we haven't actually done anything. But I thought that perhaps today with moving to a four-meeting a year's schedule, things would have changed, but that's fine. We can still work with what we got. I, I take your, your points to heart and then, you know, it's great that people do want to continue the six meetings. I think that's great. We can do a lot more work that way. So that's all I have on that issue.
Okay, thanks. And then the update regarding the regional plan of conservation and development?
Yeah, so I, I talked with our planning director probably a week or two ago and we are aiming for the end of 2021 as having a draft for the regional plan of conservation and development. And that's the only update I have for that. Oh, um, we, we are in the process. We finished a job description for hiring another regional planner. And hopefully that person would be dedicated to working on the RPOCD.
Okay. Is there, has there been any other municipalities that have looked into the shared planner position like, that, like we use in Seymour? And is there any, any other communities that have reached out?
I, I personally haven't heard of any. I can, Keith, if you're still on, do you know of any?
No, I have not heard any additional communities. Currently, we are in Beacon Falls and Seymour.
Well, I don't know why we have such a well-kept secret, but I guess being from Seymour and working with Keith, I, I, I but it is a well-kept secret. So we'd really want to keep pushing that. So maybe in the future, you know, commission, towns can take advantage of this.
We're lucky to have him as a regional for the, for the whole NV cog as well. So I just want to say kudos to Keith.
Yeah, all right. So, and then the update regarding the long-term recovery committees?
Yeah, and these are long-term recovery committees that are related to COVID-19 effects. So recovering from anything that happened during, or we got related to the COVID-19 public health emergency. There's currently a lot of vaccine-type work. I, I particularly work with the emergency management side of things. There's a lot of vaccine preparation going on right now. But there's also a lot of economic resilience planning that's going to be happening over the next six months. Right now, the state has hired the Global Resilience Institute, which is through Northeastern University. And they in turn have also contracted with the McChrystal Group. They have currently gone through and done interviews with some of the jobs and business people, workforce, religious organizations, social, social groups like Salvation Army, YMCA, all these kinds of groups, helping to figure out what, what are the particular areas that need to be bolstered up or how, how things could be done differently to avoid the mistakes that were done in response to this pandemic and to keep others, keep the businesses mostly resilient and, and having the turnover time be less so that the businesses could stay open, particularly the small businesses. So we're still working on that. There's an Economic Development Agency grant that hopefully the whole state will be awarded. Each of the cogs will be working in their particular economic development districts to help reinforce those plans regarding a pandemic to keep them pandemic-proof, so to speak. That's all I've got right now about the long-term recovery committees.
Joanna?
Yes.
Could I just ask, we actually in Thomaston had our meeting yesterday afternoon. And we were looking at that survey that you sent around or that Region 5 sent around?
Yep.
And I think we kind of had a little question. Kind of look, it seems like it's kind of like high-level type issues was, that you're looking for from us in that?
Right. So what, what Stacy's referring to is that there, the state has asked, actually the Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, they have five regions throughout the state. Region five, Knocked Up Valley Council of Governments, most of its towns are in region five. Thomaston is one of those towns in region five. The state wanted to put out a form called an unmet needs form to try to make sure that all, all, all types of issues that happen as a result of COVID-19, unmet needs that have resulted as a, as a result of COVID-19, that they get documented and addressed first at the local level. If they can't be addressed at the local level, then at the regional level. And if the region can't do, can't address this, that gets brought to the attention of the state. So Stacy, so those, you know, you, you could start adding the, the, in these instructions, the, the key thing is that you're not, this is not an unmet need that's related to one particular family or one particular business.
Like, so for instance, you know, one of the things we've been talking about frequently is childcare.
Yeah.
Okay, and the, in, you know, broadband access, if kids are remote schooling and stuff like that, that would all be stuff on there?
Definitely. Those are definitely things you can put on there.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and I, I had asked, as far, as far as this pilot program, I had sent that out to Thomaston, Southbury and Nagatuck. So, and it was meant not for the general public to use these forms, but for people like yourself, people that are planning and zoning commissioners or the local coordinator. I think you, you might have gotten it through one of your selectmen. Yeah.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff sent it to all of us. Yeah, Jeff Dunn.
Dunn, right? Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so that's exactly what that's about. It's not meant for the general public. It's just, you know.
Understood.
We, we've got a, you know, they're hoping that people in these local communities have created these little local recovery committees. And hopefully from that network of individuals, you can address it at the local level. But if it's not happening at the local level, this is a forum that says, hey, we need, we need help.
Okay, all righty.
Thank you. That's a great question. I, I, I'm glad, I'm so glad that there's people that are actually engaging in this. So thank you.
Okay.
I can answer any other questions?
Anybody have any other questions? What do you have under item nine, other?
I, I do not have anything. So, Aaron, did you want to mention something about low-impact development?
Sure, I could, while I was listening to the roundtable earlier, I noticed a lot of you are doing text amendments and zoning amendments. I just wanted to remind everybody that in 2016, when the new MS4 permit was issued, the cog did a local regulation assessment, looking at potential changes to regulations that would, would be required by the new permit. I'm sure a lot of you have sort of addressed some of those issues, but if you haven't, or if you want some more information, I can, I can get those reports to you.
Aaron, I'd like that if you, if you could.
Okay, I'll, Stacy, I'll send you yours right now.
Beautiful, thank you.
Would you send it over to Nagatuck to Aaron?
Sure. I'll get a, I'll have Joanna give me everybody's contact information. I can just send out everybody's report to them. And I'm only thinking of that because I'm actually giving a webinar tomorrow for UConn Clear on that project that we did. So if you want more information on that, I can put the, the link to that, to, to, to basically a web, a webinar series about MS4 and, and impervious surface disconnection that, that's sort of required by the permit. So
Signed up for it.
I can, I can send you that link as well.
Yeah, and, yeah, I, I wanted, Aaron, he doesn't promote himself very well, so I just wanted to give him a chance to do that because he's a really smart guy and he knows what he's talking about. So I don't have anything other. Anyone else?
I have a quick question for Lori, for Nagatuck?
Yes.
Gil, from Prospect. You, you mentioned a five-story?
Assisted living.
That's what it was. And you said Route 68 down there, the intersection or?
It's on North Main Street. Right next door to the post office. There's a block there. They bought the whole block.
Okay. Wow, good. Okay, no, I just was curious about the location of that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So, no, we have, we have any, let's see, we're on other, and then that's, looks like what we've got put together for this agenda, right? Joanna, nothing else come? Need to go over. I think we had a good discussion tonight. Very good meeting. Great to see everybody in attendance via Zoom. So I guess we'll all convene again on February 2nd.
Is there a motion for adjournment?
Yeah. Jenny, we've got a motion, second?
Second, Lori will tell her.
All right, we got a second. All in favor of adjournment? Everybody have a nice holiday season?
Hi.
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 Happy New Year.
All right.
Stay safe.
All right.
Take care.
Take care.
Stay safe.
Thanks, Joanna.
Bye.
Bye. Have a good holiday, everybody. Thank you.
You too.
All right.
Thank you.